Good evening. This is the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. It is Monday, May 9th. I would invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the agenda, I do have several requests to add to the agenda if we could. I would ask that we add 8.0 to the superintendent's report for COVID updates. Ask that we add 8.6 to the superintendent's report for open choice program. And ask that we add 9.4 to the board agenda approval of Lakes' PTO playground donation, or request for approval of the Lakes' PTO playground donation. Is everyone comfortable making that as one motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to make those three additions to the agenda this evening?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you very much.
Dr. Ballast Tracy, did you just want to note that we won't be taking, we won't be
Oh, thank you, yes.
handling item number 9.12.
Right. So 9.1, recognition of students receiving a CAPE Student Leadership Award. We have two students receiving this award. One of them could not be in attendance tonight. We only just recently found that out. And we want to make sure that they are in attendance. So we're going to push item 9.1 to our June meeting.
Great.
So that we can give those awards to both students while they are here. Okay. Action on our April 11th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any corrections or comments?
I've got two.
Okay. Go ahead.
Under number six, I'm not sure if it was me that said that we received emails in support of our work on social justice and equity. However, I did receive those communications as well, but I think it was Mr. Petra.
Okay. So number six, at the very bottom of the first page, it should say Mr. Petra?
Got it.
Okay.
And then on page seven, Larry Rizzolo, his last name is spelled R-I-Z-Z-O-L-O.
Yeah, that was. Oh, R-I-Z-Z-O-L-O. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else?
I just notes that typically we have a name and address for folks, and there was a couple of places where I didn't. It's fine, but I just noticed that some of the public comment, we couldn't call folks up by name.
On the top of page four, the very first paragraph, the Board of Education is being asked to support, this is regarding the Slim Nation Program. The Board of Education is, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to put this on the podium for public comment.
Oh, thank you so much. The Board of Education is being asked to support this weight loss nutrition program for, I'm just going to ask to remove up to 20 Board of Education employees. We were asked to consider the program. We made the determination to start with 20.
Do we want to clarify that we wanted to start with 20?
For 20 and not up to?
Oh, and then we can do that right in the next sentence. Are you suggesting, sorry, the next paragraph?
So it's noted how we came upon that number.
Right. Third line, participation in this program for 20. Board of Ed.
Does that?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we noted why we came up with that number.
No, that's great. Absolutely. And then on page five, under 10.2, Mr. Delventura noted that, and he's talking about the lunch programs. Instead of at the very end of that paragraph, these programs, I suggest putting free and reduced meals starting in September because that's what we're wanting people to be aware of. Any others? All right. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the April 11th meeting minutes as amended. Is that everybody? Okay. Terrific. That is everybody. Okay. The April 25th, 2022 workshop meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right. Any corrections, comments? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I've got everyone. Thank you. All right. We are up to number four, which is public forum for topics on the board agenda only. So if there's anyone in the public who would like to come forward and address the board again on an agenda topic, please feel free. We ask you to give your name and address and stick with three minutes, please.
And if you could write the name and address.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We just did that.
Valerie Ferrucci, 1595 Little Meadow Road. I am here to speak in support of the continued work towards equity and social justice. Specifically, I'd like a plan in place to protect staff against harassment by parents. I would also like to request transparency to the community with any plan and policies that would be set forth from Dr. Seiler's findings, as well as a similar audit to take place for grades K through six. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to address the board during this public comment? All right. Come on up.
Good evening. Bill Mazzano, 60, Jefferson Drive. I just want to address the issue of the Columbus Day/Indigenous Peoples' Day. Columbus Day is very important, not just to the Italians, but to the Irish and all immigrants. When it was originally formed, it made a national holiday. It was with the intention to bring unity. And I know you as a school board with diversity, equity, and inclusion would understand how important this is to the community, to keep it separate. I am not against Indigenous people having a day recognized, but traditionally it's been Friday after Thanksgiving. I think that would be appropriate. Neither day is a day off for students, so it wouldn't change anything. But I'm just thinking, just in being kind and understanding people's desires and how important it is to them, to make this change and merge the two just doesn't seem right to me. I think we need to be more compassionate to the other people, which is a large group, the Italians, Irish, Polish, you could go on and on. But Columbus Day unites us all. And beyond that, my last point is Columbus Day is very important to the Catholic religion. It's a huge, hence the Knights of Columbus. So I think that should be a consideration as well. It's very, very important to Catholics to keep it separate. And from what I understand, the Native Americans also support the separation, the ones have spoken through the Italian-American Defense League anyway. So please consider carefully before you make this change to the calendar. I would personally appreciate it if you would do that because it is quite important to me as a Catholic. And even though my last name is Mazzano, I'm of Irish descent. So it's very important to us as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address? Come on up.
So this is my first board meeting, so I'm a little confused.
No, go right ahead.
Is there any public, any public issue at this moment, not just specific to the agenda?
Yeah. So this is an opportunity to address the board on topics of the agenda.
I got it.
Right? So if you have a comment on a topic on the agenda, this would be the time.
Okay.
If not, there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting for topics not on the agenda.
That's going to be my space, which is why.
Okay. Wonderful. No problem. No problem. Perhaps this is obvious. One of the reasons we do it this way is so that people, we hear from people before we get through the rest of the agenda. Anyone else on topics on the agenda, board agenda? All right. Okay. Looks like none. So now we are going to go on to item number five, review and approval of expenditures for the month of April. Ms. Rider, you're going to do that for us, I think, tonight?
Thank you. Yeah, I met with Linda Trudeau, our business manager, this month to review our financials for the district. Starting with the larger numbers, our expenditures for the month of April were $4,614,237.71. Our expenditures this year are at 77.4%, 44% of the budget compared to 77.16% of the budget last year. So we're tracking historically correctly. Revenue for the month of April was $28,816.66, which included the Title III grant, which is a two-year grant of $7,653 cents probably. And it's a grant for tutor salaries and then Medicaid funding. Salaries this month were higher than prior year. We are still greatly in need and use of substitutes teacher, which continues to be a little higher than in prior years. You know, we are still dealing with COVID and teacher illnesses and needing to hire substitutes to make up that need. In purchase services, we are running higher, but this is pretty typical for this time of year. We have projects that are anticipated and planned from the beginning of the year, and as the year wears on, our facilities director kind of reevaluates and decides which projects can get pulled back or if budgeting was, you know, overextended but not overplanned for, and then we can actually adjust those numbers to accommodate that. So that's all on track, which is good to know. In terms of tuition, we are lower than prior years, and it looks like we will be tracking accordingly and doing well in terms of our tuition budget, which is great news, while still obviously providing any of the services that our students need in the district. And in terms of transportation, the budget expended this year is higher than the prior two years, but that's typical given that we do contract all of our transportation and fuel costs, but things tend to track a little higher this year. Operating transfers, we have a transfer back from dining services that was repaid to the district. This is something that we typically have to do if they're running out of deficit and need our district support, but we've already been reimbursed because dining services done extremely well this year. There's great participation. And, you know, hopefully that will continue next year. You know, we've had a free lunch program for all these past two years that will be coming to a close at the end of the school year, as Mr. Delventura pointed out at our last meeting. So it's really important that families remember to apply and participate next year. So the warrant we are submitting this month, in total of all payments, listed alphabetically is $2,089,290.85. We went into detail, as we typically do in the operations meeting, where we go over specific clarifications of expenses on the warrant. One I thought that was a really great item that we're adding to our warrant this month is Power School, which some parents are probably very familiar with, with the older kids, maybe not in the elementary schools, but it's really where kids' grades get posted, their schedules. But we're purchasing additional software so that it'll be a forms manager. So a packet of forms you get in the beginning of the year, the hope is that maybe it will go away and forms that parents have to update every year or permission slips and other things like that, and communications can all be managed through that. So that'll be a really great tool for teachers and families alike. And besides that, that is just the basic overall report of financials this month.
If I could just note, forms may not be completely gone.
I know. I know.
They may not be completely gone for this coming September, but it is a goal we are working towards.
It's a goal, but it's a hopeful parent right here. But no, I think it's a great move in that direction to become a little more paperless as a district. Excellent. All right. Thank you. More, is that a motion to accept the finances?
Yeah, so I request a motion to accept the April financials for Guilford.
Terrific. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any additional corrections from colleagues? All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nope. That's everyone. Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications they've received in the last couple of weeks that they wanted?
Just, I received several. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
So I received a lot of emails from parents just wanting us to communicate through us the absolute and obvious appreciation for all of our teaching faculty in the district.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you. Absolutely. All right. Student representatives, turn it over to you guys. How are you tonight?
Good.
How are you? Excellent. Good. Go ahead.
So first, I'm Melissa Jones. Students in grades three and four have been taking the Smarter Balance Assessment. Last week, they completed the English Language Arts section, and this week and next, they will be completing the math sections. The PTO is also sponsoring before and after-school enrichment programs for students in all of the grades, and selections include comic book creation, Harry Potter Club, chess, yoga, and running. At Baldwin Middle School, Smarter Balance testing has also been going on and is going well. There has been a testing schedule created that has minimal impact on the regular school day schedule, and testing will continue throughout the next few weeks. Parent questionnaires have also been sent out to the parents of all incoming grade four students, and later this week, they will be sharing information about student music selection at Baldwin Middle School. And parent information sessions for parents of incoming fifth graders are also being held later this month. The Student Council also hosted two out-of-this-world parties, one for fifth grade and one for sixth grade, last Thursday evening. Both sessions were very well attended, and the kids had a great time dancing to music provided by DJ Dennis and enjoying each other's company. Many thanks to the Student Council for organizing this event. The Baldwin PTO also sponsored a STEM fair on April 27th, where over 25 students participated by sharing their research projects and what they learned by taking part in this process. Thanks to the parents, teachers, family, and friends who supported the event, and a special thanks to Monica Brackney for chairing the BMS STEM fair. And lastly, many thanks to the PTO and the entire Baldwin community for supporting their work during Teacher Appreciation Week. There were treats and surprises all week, and all members of the Baldwin staff felt appreciated and valued. At Guilford High School, currently AP tests are going on and have been going on since last week, and students are working hard to take these tests while students not taking these tests are being respectful of the testing space and staying quiet in the halls. And lastly, senior events are coming up, and an email was sent out to the students while packets with forms were also sent out to the homes.
At Adams Middle School, sports, the spring sports are currently happening, where this girl softball team is currently undefeated at five and to zero. And baseball and track teams are also off to a great start. Adams Middle School has also started the transition from sixth to seventh grade, where they have had open conversations with parents, where the parents could hear from the administration as well as from the school counselors. And SBAK, Smarter Balance Testing, has also been started, is starting tomorrow, actually, at Adams Middle School. The Adams PTO is also very excited about the activities for both seventh and eighth graders for the end of the school year, where seventh graders are going to Jacob's Beach for a field trip, and eighth graders are looking forward for their annual ham and acid trip and also a field day and a barbecue. And also at Guilford High School, junior prom just happened, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, and it was a very fun, very fun night and a great turnout.
Excellent.
In Guilford Lakes, the SVAC testing is underway. Students seem to be working very hard. Third graders are engaged in a second literacy unit pilot this year. PTO enrichments have begun and again to our fill-to capacity. Teachers, staff, and building administration felt very appreciated last week. Thank you to students, PTO, and families. We are excited about the playground coming this summer. Kindergarten students wrote about persuasive pieces about what type of equipment that should be included and presented them to Miss Ryan, Mrs. Ryan. They were later visited by the playground chair, Erin Ether, to review the final designs. And then for, let me just find it. Sorry.
No problem.
For Calvin Lee, the Calvin Lee Student Council launched a new project to sponsor the education of Courage Kuku, a student in Guru, Zimbabwe, interested in pursuing a career in medicine. The students will be selling utobands, which are hand carved and assembled in Guatemala from recycled coconut shell and leather. In April 29th, they, Calvin Lee, had their varsity show at the GHS, where students showcased their many talents. It was a huge success, and the students were proud of themselves as we are proud of them. On Friday afternoon, Calvin Lee had an art night out at Bishop's Red Barn, where students' original artwork was up for auction.
Excellent. Any questions for our student reps?
Well, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you very much.
Lots going on at this time of year, I'm quite sure. And I'm glad the junior prom was not this past Friday. That was like a major, a major win in timing.
It was beautiful. It was a beautiful night.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Terrific. Excellent. Well, thank you. And always welcome to stay, but understand that you all have things to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Good luck on the APs.
Yes. All right. We are now up to number eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Freeman, you have a few things to cover this evening.
I do apologize. I do have a lengthy report.
No, it's all good. It's all good.
I do want to start with 8.0, which we added. As with the rest of the state, we are seeing an increase in COVID cases that we are tracking in district. On the week that ended 4/23, we had counted 11 positive cases in district. On the week that ended 4/30, we had counted 19 positive cases. Last week, the week that closed on 5/7, we reported 81 positive cases in the district. And we closed today, having been notified of 40 positive cases today. Now, that's a weekend catch-up. We're getting reports that tend to come in from families for Saturday and Sunday and Monday, but case counts are going up. The number of positives are increasing across the state, and they're increasing locally here. There are some areas of concentration within individual schools. We continue to be in touch with the state. We continue to be in touch with our local health authorities, and what we are being advised at this time is that while the positivity count is increasing, serious illness and hospitalization rates across the state are not increasing to such a significant degree. So at this time, when we become aware of a student or an adult in the school who is positive, that individual is asked to stay home for the five-day period. They are encouraged at the end of five days to return, but to return masked. And if you are a student who is home because of a positive COVID test, that student can continue to receive services from their classroom teacher through live streaming and send homework. We are not being advised to reinstitute contact tracing or quarantining or to close any of our schools at this time. I do want to note, there have been other schools in the state that have had to close because of staffing impact. At this time, most of those positives are falling among the student population, more so than the staff, but we've had a significant increase in positive staff numbers as well. I do want the board and the community to be aware that should staffing become impossible, we're still facing a substitute shortage, we're seeing more positives among our teaching staff. If we are unable to staff a school, then there may have to be individual school closures, possibly a district closure. And it's important to note that those days will not be able to be made up with distance learning. Those would be days that would be treated as a snow day, should we need to make that sort of closing. We're continuing to monitor. We are continuing to stay in touch with state and local health officials. I do want to encourage everybody in the community, first, to continue to watch that daily tracker. We update the cases daily on our website, so you can keep track of these numbers daily by school on our website. Additionally, I want to continue to recommend what we are hearing from state DPH, from our local health advisors. I want to encourage parents, as you look at those local numbers, to think about individually having your students mask at school. We've got audience members, we've got board members who are choosing to be masked. You may want to consider with these increasing rates, having your children continue to wear their masks while they attend school. Additionally, I want to encourage testing. If your child is positive, it is best that you and that we know that and that your child be able to stay home for those five days. We have at-home tests that are available in the nurse's office in all of our schools. You can access those through your school nurse. Additionally, our schools, six of our seven schools, currently have enough students enrolled that we are participating in a state-provided weekly PCR testing. If you would like your student to be tested weekly at school, this is a lab-administered test. It's not a take-home test. You can contact your school nurse, and you can enroll your child in the weekly testing that we have established at schools. And additionally, I want to continue to encourage parents to speak to your pediatrician and consider having your students vaccinated. If your child is going to become positive, the best way to make sure that they have a mild or asymptomatic case is to ensure that your child has been vaccinated, and I would encourage every parent, if your child is not currently vaccinated, to talk to your pediatrician and to consider that. It's an important update. It's not news that I was hoping to be sharing this spring, but we will continue to monitor.
Any questions from anyone before we?
Just one question. I know in the past, the policy had been symptomatic, stay home, but I'm sure everyone's aware, my eyes are burning right now. It's like a horrific allergy season. How are the nurses handling that? How are they staying on top of it? Is testing suggested if that's the case?
Yes. So testing, right, if we see that you're having severe allergy symptoms, we'll send you home with an at-home test. If it's negative, then you're welcome to return the next day. And at times, we're asking for you to contact your pediatrician, especially if you've got, if your child has a history of severe allergies, then that's something the pediatrician can help us to make a good decision on.
Great.
It's an important question. Thank you.
And given all the uptick, we're still headed towards a normal graduation.
Again, unless we run into staffing issues, oh, structurally, yes. We are still planning, and as you heard the student reports, there are, there continue to be regular school activities that are taking place. We had a junior prom, we're planning on a senior prom, we are planning on a regular traditional graduation on the town green for our seniors.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you. I also want to talk tonight a little bit about calendar creation. There have been a number of comments at Board of Education meetings recently, and I know board members have received communications, there was communication shared here tonight about calendar creation and specifically how holidays are addressed on our calendar. I do want to take a few minutes and explain how holidays are included in our school calendar, how this year's calendar came to be designed and then approved by the Board of Ed, and suggestions for moving forward. First, and I know this may seem a little confusing, holidays are labeled on our school calendar in situations where folks could reasonably assume that school would otherwise be in session. Our calendar doesn't list every holiday or every recognition day that exists, but if there's a Monday or a Tuesday, that parents could reasonably assume that we should be open for school, and we are not, we identify on the calendar what's happening on that day as an explanation in part for why we're not in school on that day. We do not list holidays that we, as a community or as a school system, simply identify as important or of value. For instance, our school calendar does not label Veterans Day, or Christmas, or Easter, or the Fourth of July. In no case are those days not listed because we don't recognize that those days are important to members of our community. They're not listed because we have school. On Veterans Day, we in fact hold school, and we spend the day talking to veterans and talking about the history of this country and the importance of veterans to this country. It actually, the fact that we have school on Veterans Day, I think, speaks to the importance of that day. We don't list the Fourth of July because nobody expects us to be in school in early July, and so there are simply days that are not identified on our calendar. On the other hand, there are days that are identified on our calendar because school is not in session, but the district is not, in noting those days, suggesting that these days are important or suggesting that families and their students should be recognizing those days when they're out of school. For instance, the calendar this year recognizes Yom Kippur, and on most years, the calendar recognizes Good Friday. In no way are we suggesting that every family should be recognizing those days. It's just there informationally to note that we're not having school on this date, and this is what is occurring. So that historically has been the rationale for why we name a day on our calendar. The way we build our calendar The way we build our calendar is that we begin with a regional template. We are part of the LEARN RESC area. We work with schools from Guilford all the way out to Stonington and as far north as Durham and Middlefield. LEARN puts together a template calendar every year that they provide to us, and we work as best we can to track to that calendar. We try to align start and close dates, we try to align professional development days, and we try to align things like April break. This helps us with magnet schooling, it helps with consistency, because up and down the shoreline, you've got parents who might be teachers in one community, but parents in another community. The LEARN calendar that was distributed this year, from which we began our calendar, that we brought to you for your approval, only listed Indigenous Peoples' Day in early October. We intentionally put Columbus Day on our calendar, even though the template we worked from was only naming Indigenous Peoples' Day, we did not make that decision. We included Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Since the conversation has been happening in Guilford, we have looked at all of the school calendars for all of the districts in that shoreline LEARN area. When you look at those calendars, what you see is that some districts recognize Columbus Day, some districts recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, some districts like Guilford recognize both on the calendar. Some districts have school on that day, and therefore don't name anything, and some districts are off, but simply identify it as a school holiday. They don't give any information as to why school is out. When we chose to go with naming both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, there were really three things that were happening there. One is that we were thinking about the logic behind how we name holidays, and it made sense that if Indigenous Peoples' Day is a recognized day, that it made sense to name it. If other districts were dropping Columbus Day and only naming Indigenous Peoples' Day, it made sense to us to include it. Additionally, as we had gone through the conversation about changing the mascot here at the high school, there were a number of people who spoke about the importance of the local indigenous history here in Guilford. And in fact, there were people who were disappointed that we were dropping the Guilford High School Indian mascot to change to something later, which later became the Grizzlies. When the decision was made, a number of those folks shared with me directly, with the board and in the community through social media letters to the editor, that it was really important to them that we not forget the importance of our indigenous history locally here in Guilford. So by including that, to me, I thought that we were also being responsive to that conversation, not just in taking away a mascot, but in identifying their community, for the community, that there's also this other event that is occurring on this day. And then finally, when looking at all the options that have played out up and down the district, we simply thought that naming both was the most inclusive way of moving forward. In some conversations that I had with individuals around Columbus Day, it was suggested that we were engaging in cancel culture, and I had to remind some folks who contacted me from across the country, that we hadn't in fact removed Columbus from the calendar. Columbus Day is still there. We were being inclusive. I don't think it is cancel culture, I think it's a culture of sharing and including and recognizing. All of that being said, that was why we brought the calendar forward to the board, that we asked for this board to approve. On Columbus Day, which we now have no school next year on that date, and we identify for the community that both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day are happening on that day. The district takes no position, the schools take no position on how families and students could, should, or should recognize those days. It's simply noting why we're not in school on those days. And many of the comments that were made to the board and to me individually, it has been suggested that we should just move Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we should put that on another date. I think it's important to note that we didn't create Indigenous Peoples' Day locally here in Guilford. It is a recognized day. In fact, President Biden this year asked for communities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. We didn't pick the date that it sits on, we didn't create it, and it's not within our sphere of authority to simply move it to another day. And then going back to the logic of the calendar, we wouldn't simply name it on another day if that's a day that we would otherwise not be in school. And so I know that the comment has been made, don't force them together, but the schools didn't make that determination. We're simply recognizing that they do both exist on the same day. And then it's been suggested that it would be easy to just name it on another day. But that now begins to change the internal logic of the calendar, and I would suggest that that would then lead to knock-on considerations for all of the other days that are recognized on the calendar. And as I mentioned earlier, and as was suggested to me during some of these conversations, there are districts that don't name any, right? Everything when school is not in session is just identified with a color code that is labeled as a school holiday. At this time, if the board is looking for a suggestion or recommendation from me, I would suggest that this year's calendar, next year's calendar rather, has been approved. It is done and it is approved at this time. I continue to believe that the rationale behind that approval is solid, and I wouldn't suggest going back and reopening that calendar to change one specific day if it could end up changing all of the way we recognize holidays moving forward. I do suggest that in September or October of next year, when the next calendar comes forward, that we spend a little bit of time looking at how all of the holidays are labeled on that calendar, talking about the internal logic about why we name them and why we don't name others, and having a consideration about what we should do for all of the holidays collectively, not for a single day that we're looking at being concerned around. I know there's been a lot of comment, I hadn't offered a rationale, I wanted to offer that rationale this evening, and it's a long report, I was going to pause after each item and see if there's a question.
Questions on that, from anybody? No. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's helpful. All right, 8.2.
8.3.
8.2, I think.
I'm sorry, 8.2. I also want to spend some time talking about some conversation that's been happening in the community around special education services. I think the board is aware, and I think many in the community are aware, that a number of weeks ago now, the Guilford Human Rights Commission received a number of anonymous communications expressing concerns about services provided to, or the ways in which services are provided to special education students. Those were anonymous communications. I believe they numbered about 10 in number, and I want to talk about how we have responded to that event. One, I want to start by creating some, by providing some context. We service approximately 400 students with special educational needs or special needs in the Guilford Public Schools. We facilitate between 1,200 and 1,300 planning and placement team meetings every year in the Guilford Public Schools around that student population. These communications that were delivered to the GHRC were anonymous. Many of them included specific information. It's really difficult to respond to anonymous information, especially when it has specific details connected to it. I said in the press right after that happened, and I want to say here again today, that if there are parents of students with special needs who have concerns, we strongly encourage you to reach out individually and specifically to an adult who works with your students. You can reach out to a teacher who provides service to your students. You can reach out to the special education coordinator who works with the teachers at your level. I would encourage you to reach out to the principal of your school building if you have concerns. You can reach out to Mr. Scanziano, who is the Director of Special Education, Director of Special Services in District. You can reach out to me directly. Additionally, parents of students with special needs, there is an office at the State Department of Education, and if you are for any reason uncomfortable speaking to any adult in Guilford Public Schools, I encourage you to reach out to the state and to speak to somebody there so that they can make sure that we're hearing those concerns appropriately and specifically. We take enormous pride in the special education services that we provide and in the relationship we have with those families. So to know that those concerns are out there is troubling, and to know that they're out there anonymously makes it really difficult for us to be able to respond and to address those. Having said that, I do want to talk about the steps that we have taken. So immediately upon hearing this, I met with Mr. Scanziano, who is the Director of Special Services, and we went through all of those materials. We looked at every piece that was written, we talked about what we could understand about specific concerns, and we talked about any patterns that we saw within those communications. We talked about how we could move forward and better address those concerns. Mr. Scanziano met with the special education coordinators and had a similar conversation where the four of them went through each of those concerns. I want to point out that in the budget that was approved this past April, we have an increase in special education teaching staff of one full position. This budget includes, excuse me. This budget includes the addition of two part-time special education positions. Mr. Scanziano and I met and talked, and I want to inform the board tonight that we're going to add a third .5 position as we roll out next year. That's not approved in the budget. That is not one of the teaching positions that has been approved. It's above budget. We do this often, generally around kindergarten positions, but we want to make sure that we're being responsive. While many of the letters expressed concerns about communication, and quite honestly, it was communication at the administrative level, the first line of contact is in the classroom, and we want to make sure that we've got, that we've got appropriate numbers so that we are building those relationships with those parents of students with special needs. Additionally, we will be adding an additional paraprofessional position above the budget that was approved back in April for the same logic. What I'm more excited about, the teaching positions are positive, but what I'm more excited about is that as we thought about those anonymous comments that were coming in, we thought about one of the annual tools that we use. Every year, we push out a climate survey, and we ask some of our older students, and we ask parents, and we have staff members in every building to give us feedback, it's anonymous feedback, about the ways that we're meeting needs at the building level. We have never included a specific breakout portion of that tool to talk about the special education department, specifically to talk to parents of students with special needs. This year, when that climate survey rolls out, the parent climate survey will include a breakout section of questions that are only targeting parents of children with special needs. We will get all 400 of the families this way who have students with special needs. We're asking about the quality of our services in a number of specific areas, and there will be an opportunity for open comment, and that's also provided anonymously. But it will be specifically reaching out to the whole group, so that we're trying to measure the whole group as we get that information in. And I'm particularly excited about that. We have been doing that for, I want to say, eight or nine years now at the building level. It was a blind spot that we were not adding it for special services, but that will be included this year. And in fact, I'm additionally excited because we will be including a portion at the high school parent survey for athletics as well, and asking about how our athletic department is doing. So I am excited about being able to roll that component out. But again, I want to remind the specific parents of students with special needs who are feeling that those needs aren't being met, we take enormous pride in our relationship with you, we care about our relationship with you, and I want to again invite you to come in and speak to any adult who works with your child at any level so that we can appropriately respond to your individual needs. The pieces that I've talked about are holistic and systemic, but if there's specific concerns about your child, please speak to a teacher, speak to a special education coordinator, speak to a principal, speak to Mr. Scanziano, speak to me. And again, if you are uncomfortable doing that, reach out to the state so that they can provide you with the supports that you need to feel comfortable reaching out to us. We have worked really, really hard on the special education services over these last 10 years. We're proud of the work that we have done. We want to continue to make sure that everybody who provides and receives those services shares in that pride. And again, I think the pieces that we've put in place will help, but what's going to help more is parents knowing that they can come in and speak to us, and that's an important, that's just an important response.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. That's very helpful information. You have a question? Sure.
About the climate surveys. I know that we've had them in the district for a while. My understanding is they aren't necessarily, are we going to see those? That's my question.
So yes, the quick answer is that all of the, all of the responses that ask for a response on a scale of one to five, from strongly agreeing to strongly disagreeing, those are released publicly. What is not shared publicly are the open-ended responses, and that's because sometimes people are sharing strong opinions, sometimes they're using specific names, sometimes they're using language that I'm not going to publish. The open-ended responses get read, so again, they've been primarily structured at the building level. Every single open-ended response gets read by me, it gets read by the principal at that building. So when we talk about the special education department, or the athletic department, all of those open-ended responses will be read by me, by Mr. Scanziano, and by Mr. Jarvis respectively. Principal A does not read the open-ended responses for Principal B's building, those are held more closely, but I also supervise the principals, and I supervise Mr. Scanziano, and I have a hand in supervising Mr. Jarvis. We sit down and talk about all of those open-ended responses as well. And so, yes, the scaled responses are shared publicly, the open-ended responses are not shared publicly. Those are for internal improvement. I also think it's important that the community knows that, right? Your open-ended response is not going to end up splashed on our website, it's going to be read by the people who need to read it most.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for that, because that was, obviously raised some concerns for folks. That's true.
I think we're about halfway through the report. Do we want to take an intermission?
That's okay. 8.3 enrollment update.
So I also do want to talk about enrollment. And so generally at this time, I give the board an update on K enrollment. At this point right now, kindergarten enrollments are coming in relatively low. We don't know if that is an indicator that we're enrolling a particularly small kindergarten class, or if enrollments are coming in late. So I do want to remind the community, we put a reminder out in the Guilford Courier again this week, if you have a student who you anticipate to be in kindergarten next year, enrollment is open now. We strongly encourage you not to wait for September, not to wait for summer. Please enroll those students now. The earlier that we can see those enrollment numbers, the more that informs other decisions that we have to make moving forward. That being said, I have received a number of communications from parents who are looking at students who will be moving into primarily third and fourth grades, to some degree second grades next year. And I have had parents who have raised concerns about class sizes that they're anticipating seeing next year. It is important to note, the board has a policy around class size. The policy 6011 in the policy book, it notes that for kindergarten, the anticipated class size is 15 to 20. And in fact, when we went to full-day kindergarten, the board and I made a public commitment that we would really try to stay at the low end of that 15 to 20 for kindergartens. In the third and fourth grade, the board policy suggests that the target size for a class is 18 to 24. And so what often happens is that in some schools, as we're monitoring those numbers, I, I'm sorry to add this, but I need to add this, particularly in difficult budget years, right? Remember that this year, we passed a 5% budget. It's the largest budget increase that we've seen in years in Guilford. But what tends to happen is that as you go from kindergarten to first to second grade, if the numbers allow, you may see sections, there may be four sections or three sections for kindergarten one and two, and that may be reduced to three or four sections as we go from a 15-20 target range to an 18-24 target range. And again, even if we're trying to stay in the low end of that, if we, if we maintained all the section totals from kindergarten up, the policy in effect would be 15 to 20 for the entire elementary level. Now, what we've said over and over again is that our elementary average class size tends to be 18 and 1/2 or 19, and that's because it's around 15 in kindergarten and one, but it's in the low 20s as you get into three and four. And that does necessitate that move. What's difficult, and this board has talked about it over and over and over again, if we had one great big elementary school and we had all 12 of the fourth grade sections in the same school, we could make sure that all 12 of those classes were really equally balanced. But because we have a neighborhood structure, when one school has three sections in second grade, moving into third grade, that are already sitting at 19s, we're likely not going to reduce a section and move that group forward. and move that group forward. When another neighborhood school has three sections or three sections that are sitting on the low end of the scale, sitting at 15 or 16, then that's the place where you might see that move. And so what happens is the neighborhood school that had the smallest K1 and 2s ends up having the largest 3s and 4s. And I know how troubling that is for parents. But that again is the logic around staffing as we are looking at those decisions moving forward. All of that being said, the board has already heard me mention tonight that we're adding an unbudgeted additional special education position. I'm going to mention a possible another unbudgeted position later. And I mentioned that for the moment, kindergarten is tracking low. So with all of that laid out, we simply don't have a final determination yet on what class sizes are going to look like or what class sections are going to be for next year. And this is one of the reasons we don't send out class notifications on the last day of school. And we hold it until deeper into the summer. If kindergarten rolls low, we may have teacher resources in kindergarten that we can then deploy in a third or fourth grade rather than making that decision to collapse sections. Even if kindergarten enrolls as expected, but we have some summer enrollments, I may be coming back to the board at your July or August meeting and saying, you know how I usually add a kindergarten teacher? Well, this year, we actually need to talk about a different grade level. The bottom line is, I want the community to understand the rationale. But I also want parents to know that we are watching this carefully. We're monitoring a number of moving parts. And if we need to make a decision to add resources or deploy other resources differently, we will make that decision when it becomes necessary. But again, unless we change to a district-wide elementary structure, there will be differences in school to school. We look at it really carefully. We pay a lot of attention to it. And we will make the best decision that we can moving forward. I also want to note, the policy was written pre-pandemic. And I am acutely aware of the impacts that this pandemic has had on our youngest, all of our students, but particularly our youngest students. And that is part of the consideration. I know I didn't mention it in this portion of the report, but I don't want people to think that that's not one of the important considerations as we make this difficult decision moving forward.
And I think we've had, right, we've experienced over the years, you know, lakes for a year or two ends up with, you know, a class or two that's 22, you know, fourth grade, where some of the other schools have fourth grade at 18. And then a couple of years later, it's Leet that has a larger class size. I mean, it's also a constant balance. And those bigger classes kind of shift depending on the population at any given time.
Yeah, there are definitely bubbles that move through individual community schools. And it almost appears to be Murphy's Law that the place that I'm crossing my fingers and hoping we don't have a bunch of third graders, like all the third graders move into that neighborhood.
Right, right.
Again, we're going to really pay attention to that and try to watch that really carefully as this next couple of months and then even the early summer unfolds.
And we have many, many times moved teachers from grades to other grades as the student body changes in numbers.
Yep. We do that thoughtfully. We do that humanely for the teachers involved. But the most important piece is to get the staff where the students need them to be. And we will make those decisions. It's also really important for the community to know that there are elementary principals out there who are having this conversation with me every day. The principals are having the same conversation. They're making their concerns known. Parents do not need to go in and rattle your principal's cage. Their cages are thoroughly rattled. They are speaking to me about these concerns. And we're having that conversation. And they're part of that monitoring moving forward.
Okay. Questions, comments on enrollment, any of these numbers? All righty, next.
I also want to update for the community. And I promise not to put the board through all of this again. But on April 25th, at a workshop meeting, we updated the board on Dr. Seiler's report to our community. And specifically, nine recommendations that Dr. Seiler had provided to us as a system moving forward. Want to start by mentioning to the community that if you're not familiar with Dr. Seiler's report or his recommendations, it is on our website. It's cross-listed both under outside evaluations and reports and on our equity tab. But I would encourage you to take a look at what Dr. Seiler provided to us. It's lengthy, but it's easily readable. It's very accessible. And his slides are there as well. His slides, he gave us nine recommendations to help focus our work and continue our work moving forward around equity and social justice in our schools. Specifically, what I want to share with the community is that those nine recommendations, I believe, fall into three big and important buckets. The first bucket was around continued support and training for teachers. There's a number of recommendations that Dr. Seiler shares. I think we heard a comment earlier tonight that the teachers need our continued support and they need continued training. That is a significant focus as we are moving through this year and into next year. I think I mentioned to the board that we are working with a group out of Harvard. It is the Democratic Knowledge Project. And we are working with them to help provide a baseline of conversation for all of our teachers about making sure that they're creating safe spaces for difficult conversations in their classroom. How do you talk about important and challenging topics knowing that people are going to have a variety of opinions and emotions connected to those topics? Teachers want to be skillful at that. And teachers are concerned about being skillful at that. So we're excited about that as an opportunity. We're also beginning to work with a group called Teach Rock. Teach Rock actually has connections here locally in Guilford. They are recommended by the State Department of Education. And it is a group that focuses on equity and belongingness in schools, but does it through an arts focus. And so specifically for next year, we are excited about looking at Teach Rock and exploring possibilities specifically at the elementary level and specifically in the music and art classes at the elementary level next year with, we hope, a future to then grow from those art and music classrooms into the mainstream classrooms, the regular classrooms at the elementary level as well. Dr. Seiler is going to continue to work with our coaching cohort, with the embedded professional developers who we have in district. And they are going to continue to work with teachers as we are making sure that we're creating those safe spaces in every classroom and that the teachers feel confident and comfortable creating those safe spaces. Additionally, we're going to be taking time to collaborate with our teachers and to reexamine our teacher supervision and evaluation plan. We created a new supervision evaluation plan locally here in Guilford back in 2012. We updated it a couple of years ago. We want to look more carefully and make sure that it includes callouts around exactly those safe spaces that I've mentioned. The conversation over the past year has been about making sure that every student sees themselves represented in the texts and in the materials and in the conversations that happen in the classroom. That conversations create space for every student to have a voice and that those conversations are respectful and civil and that we're both modeling that for students and holding students accountable to that. But none of that appears overtly in our supervision and evaluation plan. And so we're going to make sure that we work on that as well. That's the first big bucket. How do we continue to support and continue to help our teachers learn how to be more skillful at this? Second big bucket is really around community relations. And I would hope that the community has seen some of our early steps in this direction. Dr. Seiler recommended that we have more contact with the community at large, that we both push more information out through the idea of panels. Quite honestly, to model more on a panel that the Guilford Human Rights Commission hosted last year for alumni who talked about their experiences and what they were left wanting more of when they graduated Guilford. But can we do more to foreground the student voice to talk about what is happening in the classrooms? Teacher and student panels, sharing what we're doing more thoroughly with the community. But also more opportunities to listen to the community. So a number of weeks ago, the Board of Education hosted your first informal conversation. Not a formal board meeting, not something with a quorum, not something guided by Robert's rules, but a conversation on a Saturday morning in this room where board members and I had an opportunity to actually talk with the community, engage in back and forth, answer questions. That was a great experience. And the second one of those opportunities is scheduled for May 14th,
This coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday in the Baldwin Media Center. Dr. Harrison and I hosted a conversation at Baldwin one evening where we invited parents of students who identify as members of historically marginalized populations or parents who identify as such to come in and have a conversation with us. That was a big turnout. We had 30 people. We've actually talked about doing that more often in some smaller groups. But those kinds of community outreaches are important. And we're going to continue to do more of that community outreach, both pushing more information out and listening more to the community. At the same time, the Policy Committee of the Board is looking at policies that sort of straddle the relationship between our parent community, the community at large, and instruction happening in our schools. You're going to see a receive-only item later tonight about the policy for controversial issues in our classrooms. The Policy Committee, along with our media specialists, has been looking at our policy around text approval and adoption and challenges to texts that may come in. And we're working closely with groups at the state to look at how we respond to apparent requests to have their child not participate in a part of our curriculum. There are parts of the curricula that are required by the state. There are graduation requirements. There are other portions that the state has identified as opt-out opportunities for parents. And we're going to be looking at those policies as well. And again, communicating that out more broadly with the community. And then the final bucket, I think, is around student relationships. Dr. Seiler talks to us about being more transparent when incidents occur in our community. I hope that the community recognizes that there's been an effort in these last several months to be more transparent about events that are happening in our schools or in our community. I know that principals are pushing that information out. I know that Mrs. Chaff has written letters to the parent community informing the parents of events that are occurring or behaviors that are occurring in the high school, proactively in inviting parents to engage with students at home about these concerns that we're seeing in schools. I know Mr. Regan at Adams has done something similarly. And we are making every effort when something happens in our community to make sure that we're talking about it with our community to the degree that's appropriate and possible. I really appreciate a comment from Dr. Harrison who talks about the measure of how well a community is doing around developing a sense of community and belongingness and acceptance of all. Isn't that negative events never occur? That's not the measure of how well you're doing. The measure is how you respond when negative events occur. And that's something that we need to continue to work better at. And transparency is going to continue to be a portion of that. Dr. Harrison is going to be working with our administrative staff as well as with our related services staff. By that, I mean people like school counselors, school social workers and school psychologists to look at the way that we approach discipline in the schools. And in cases that involve things like intolerant speech, hate speech, or hateful speech, that we begin adopting a more restorative stance rather than a punitive stance. And how can we make sure that the students who made those mistakes have learned from them and do better moving forward? And how can we make sure that the students who were the receivers of that intolerant or hateful or hate speech know that they were supported and protected and that we're not handing out discipline in a vacuum? And the students who were the target of those behaviors or the parents of those students or the community at large doesn't feel that they know that it was responded to? Now, we're going to be balancing confidentiality and student protection and student rights against those goals. But we need to do better moving forward. And so again, Dr. Harrison is going to be really focusing on that student relationship work for us. We're going to continue to work on that parent communication and community relationship component as an administrative team and as a board leadership team. And then Dr. Seiler and the folks from Harvard and hopefully the group from Teach Rock are really going to be working, as well as Dr. Crystal, who's sitting behind me, who are going to really be working on that teacher instructional and training component. I know that we spoke about it for about two hours when we spoke back on April 25th. I don't want to give it the full two hours here, but I did want to give that broader overview. I also know that there have been requests. There will be a written plan that comes out codifying and putting in writing what I have quickly overviewed for you now. Now, there's still some moving pieces. I don't want to put that plan out naming the group from Harvard if we end up not signing a contract with the group from Harvard. These are the broad strokes. As the details come into clearer focus, there will be a written plan that is going to be shared with the board and shared publicly with the community as well as we continue to move forward. Three buckets, nine recommendations, a big important piece of community work that we're still embracing here. The board still has both an initiative and a goal and a public statement about the importance of equity and social justice. We intend to continue moving that effort forward.
Excellent. And as you noted, we talked about this in detail at our workshop. Wonderful. We talked in detail at our workshop meeting, but I'll give another pause if anyone has any thoughts. All right, let's take a sip of water.
Only like six more items.
No, 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 no. You've got two.
But important.
Yep, 8.5 personnel update.
So I do want to take a moment and talk a little bit about personnel moving forward. And a lot of, all of these issues are going to be related. All of these topics from tonight's report are going to be related. I know that the community is aware that at this point, we are going to be facing two vacancies for principals in Guilford schools next year moving forward. We only have seven schools. We only have seven principals. This year, two of our principals have informed us that they are going to be moving on to other opportunities. And I know that I have shared with the board a timeline for those principal hires. I want the community to know that we will be sending a thought exchange request out to the parents in both of those school communities, both Leet and Adams. Mrs. Slowly and Mr. Regan are both moving on to other opportunities. The parents and the staff members in those communities are going to be asked about the characteristics and dispositions that you're looking for in your next principal. You're going to be asked about the skill sets that you're looking for in your next principal. And you're going to be asked about the experiences and the experience that you're looking for in your next principal. We used to do these in meetings. And I'd go to each of the settings and hold a meeting. And sometimes I'd get three or four parents. When we did this in the middle of the pandemic and used thought exchange as a tool, I mourned that loss. I mourned the opportunity to go and talk to the PTO or the parent group. But we got a lot more involvement. And so even though we're winding down, we're going to continue to use thought exchange because while I enjoy an easel sheet and markers and writing a lot, it's more important to me that we hear from a broader group of people. So we will use the thought exchange tool. We will be putting together interview committees. We have already posted and advertised for these positions. And we will do everything we can to bring in the right principals to lead those two schools moving forward. Having said all of that, I want to share with the board and with the community that I have concerns. I am worried about moving forward. Guilford is not, well, let me say this too. Guilford is not the only community that has experienced increased resignations, increased movement among the teacher base and the leadership base, principals and administrators. I'm not convinced that the two principals that we know will be leaving us next year are the last administrators who may be leaving us. We have seven principals, but we have an administrative team that is 21 people. Two leaving is approximately 10% of that group. If we have another one or two people who choose to move on at this time, that's going to be a significant impact in one year. Now, this is not the first time that we've replaced two principals in one year. We've actually done it twice before in my tenure here. My concern is about the feedback that I am hearing around the state from school leaders. I am not speaking for Mrs. Slowly or for Mr. Regan when I say this. I am not talking about their reasons for their decisions. They can speak for themselves. But I've spoken to the full leadership team here in Guilford. And I've spoken to a lot of other leaders around the state. And what I am hearing is that school leaders are moving away from school positions. And they're moving away because of the stress and the weight that is associated with the work that they are doing in those positions. Now, some of that is pandemic-related. And that is sort of a floor. And that is essentially the same across the whole state. Not exactly the same. There's going to be differences from community to community. But everybody is dealing with that. I do want to share that I believe in Guilford specifically and in some other communities similar to Guilford, there has been an additional weight and an additional stressor that has been layered on our teaching staff and our leaders. And again, not speaking for Mr. Regan or Mrs. Slowly specifically, but I believe that that is having an impact. And it's going to have an impact both on our ability to retain. that is having an impact, and it's going to have an impact both on our ability to retain our leadership and our teachers, and it's going to have an impact on our ability to replace those folks. And the additional weight that I'm talking about has to do with the conversation that we've been having in a community about race and equity and social justice and the ways in which we have been having that conversation. And so, I know that there has been criticism suggested of the way that I have handled it and the way that the Board may have handled it, and I know that we're working to be responsive to that critique and to try to adjust the ways that we respond. But I also need to take a moment tonight to name that much of the weight that is falling on our leaders and our teachers is coming from the way in which the conversation is being had. There are letters to the editor that are being published that suggest that parents shouldn't be trusting the teachers and the school administrators who are shaping the experiences for their children in Guilford. I've been in Guilford for more than a decade, and that is a first. I have never experienced that tenor in this community before. These teachers are the same teachers who have been in the schools for my 10 years and for most of them significantly longer than that. You guys received a retirement today, not today, this year, from a teacher who's been teaching in Guilford for 40 years. These are the same teachers who were here when we built this high school. They're the same teachers who have been supporting your students. There was a letter that was written directly to every single certified teacher in the Guilford Public Schools, and it said overtly to them, "We are watching you." There have been suggestions in this community recently that administrators are destroying or hiding evidence of student misbehavior for their own gain, for their own means. All of that is patently untrue. The people who come to Guilford to teach these students in Guilford and lead the schools in Guilford do so out of a love for children. They do so because they love the subjects they teach, they love teaching children, and that's what they want to do. We are seeing posted to social media assignments that have been used in Guilford classrooms for the past five years without complaint, and they are being posted to social media with the suggestion that they are somehow new and destructive and divisive. That is untrue. Now, do we make mistakes in Guilford Public Schools? Yes. They're honest mistakes. The teachers who come in every day do so because they love what they do. I think that teachers are every bit the heroes that the nurses, the doctors, the first responders are that we have celebrated over these last two or three years. And the principals who lead those buildings are simply teachers themselves who become leaders of teachers. And I worry that in Guilford and in Connecticut specifically, we're going to see good, committed leaders leaving communities or leaving the profession because of the ways we're having this conversation and because of the accusations and tactics that have been leveled and employed. We have hired multiple principals in my time in Guilford. I assure this Board that we will bring all of the energy and all of the rigor to this search, and we will find you the right principals. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't share my concerns more broadly in moving forward with you, the Board, and with the Guilford community moving forward.
Thank you. This is a really serious and important topic. The Board was, in fact, copied on the letter that went to every teacher and certified staff in this district that ended with, "We are watching you." That is a very, very tough way to conduct your work, your classroom, to support, to teach, to nurture the young people in your classroom. And I am urging, urging this community to change the tone of the discourse, please, to change the way we think about what our teachers are doing every day, to give them the support they need to do the really important and expert and professional job that they do in this district. It has to be done differently. It has to be done differently. I don't know if my colleagues have anything else to say, but...
Paul, thank you for that. People have accused the Board and the Superintendent of not being transparent. That's as bad as transparent as can be, and rightly so. But I'd hasten to add that, at least as I've viewed it, we're talking about a relatively small amount of people having a large negative effect. That we're not talking about the community. We're talking about a relatively small group of people that are causing this so that rather than inadvertently tarring the community, I would just as soon tar the people who are polluting the environment or infecting it in ways in which I think they actually know that they're hiding. And I wrote a piece recently to the rest of the Board members. Mark Twain once said that "Truth has no defense against a fool who believes lies." And I think we have a few people in this community who either themselves are lying or believe outsiders' lies, and the community is becoming victim to that. And I think the only way we can fight that is by, one, naming it and by us all saying, "We're not going to take it." And the worst problem is, of course, that the people who are most innocent in this, the teachers and the administrators, are the people who end up taking the pressure because they internalize it. And so, the fact that it's out now allows us to talk about it in a way that I think we can in common combat that, both in and out of the Board. So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the clarification. I don't want anybody to think that I don't know that the majority of parents in the majority of this Guilford community loves their teachers and loves their principals. I absolutely know that that is true, and I don't want to suggest motivation for anybody, but it is the conversation around this topic and the way that it is happening that is having the impact that I am seeing on leaders specifically and locally in Guilford and more broadly in the state. Thank you for that clarification.
And the difference in this community compared to across the state and the nation is we have strong empirical evidence that the community is supportive of the schools, both in the Board election and in the budget. And so, there's at least concrete evidence that the community is supportive. Raising this issue may cause people to realize we can't take that for granted. That is, there's still stuff happening out there which perhaps people thought was over with the election. It's not. It's just insidious, and it's hidden. But it's nice to know that we can sort of fight it in common now rather than...
And if I could just add, you know, we're on the heels of Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and I know everyone here on the Board has, you know, in some way been touched by a teacher in their own lives, and, you know, I'm thankful that you spoke to this. It's difficult as a Board to talk about this because obviously we want to be respectful of everyone's hopes and opinions about the education that their child's being provided for, but please know that, I can speak for myself, I stand completely behind our teachers and our administrators and really hope that this boat can turn and we can really focus on all the great work that we're trying to do here and not let a few angry voices, however justified they feel, drown out all of the things that Dr. Freeman just spent all this time talking about because that's the great work and the great work that a teacher shows up every day, irregardless of everything they've been subjected to over the last few years, and that our administrators show up every day and give of themselves to our kids. And we just have to remember the basic tenets around that and not get lost in the anger and the discourse, like Dr. Freeman said. Change the conversation, and that's really up to our community, is that's how you are empowered to fix this, is to change the conversation if it's just you and one other person or seeing a teacher and just shooting the mini mail saying, "You're doing a great job." It's the, I really believe it at this point. We really have to just turn the course, and it's going to take everybody. It's not just the Board's job or Dr. Freeman's job. We're really relying on all of you, but thank you for sharing that.
If I could just ask a question. It's my understanding that across the Board, there's quite a number of emails that are being sent on a daily or near-daily basis to teachers. Can you talk, it's so hard, in that those teachers then have to respond to those concerns so, which then takes away from them preparing for the next course and teaching the others. So, if you have 20 kids in a class and you're dealing with one student daily, it's taking away from the other 19 kids and their preparation for doing that. Can you speak a little bit? Has that been happening? That's what I've been hearing has been happening.
I want to be careful in how I respond to that because first, I want to start by saying that our teachers want to hear from our parents, right? In an earlier item, I said about three times, "Please reach out to a teacher." We want to have that relationship with parents. It is foundational to what we do here. When I talk about Guilford around the state and I talk about parental involvement in our work that we do here, you know, the joke is that on parent night, the biggest problem we have is parking, right? That we can't, our parents want to be involved and want to be engaged, and that is important. What I worry about is when I see national playbooks that are released that are encouraging somebody who disagrees with the direction that the Board is set to intentionally gum up the works by filing repeat FOI requests or by making requests for lots of... Again, I do not want to ascribe motivation to anybody, but it is apparent to our building administrators that some of what is playing out is not a sincere attempt to engage in an open conversation, but it is an opportunity to play gotcha. And what I worry about is that the disagreement falls here. It falls with the direction that's been set by the Board or by me as Superintendent, but the people who are getting caught up, the people who are closest at hand for those tactics are teachers and principals. And I worry that it is going, and again, I'm commenting both on my personal experience here in Guilford, but I'm also watching this happen. I'm not, I'm really not being Chicken Little, and I don't believe I'm being paranoid when I say that there is a political playbook because this weekend, I received a link to one of the websites telling parents how to do these things, that if you don't like what your district is doing, here are the steps that you take. And they are not sincere, open, "Let's talk about our disagreements. Let's talk about how best to move forward." They are ways to lash out at those who are closest at hand, and those are teachers and principals. I worry that we're going to lose young, talented teachers, and I worry that we're going to lose young, talented principals because people are saying, "This just isn't worth it." And I worry that we're going to cause real damage to public education, which is important not just to Guilford and not just to the real estate values here locally, but it's important to our nation, right? I think Mark Twain also said that the strength of a nation comes from the public schools, right? I am really concerned about, again, the way this conversation is happening. I am open to criticism. I am, you know, I will take criticism with anybody else, but I don't want to see the teachers and the principals being attacked over this. Thank you for that question.
And we did have, as you noted, Dr. Freeman, several weeks ago, a community conversation. We're having another one this Saturday. That was a successful conversation among people that disagreed about or asked probing questions about some of what we're doing. So, just to echo that, we are interested in the conversation, but we really need civil discourse, and we really strongly request that emails with, really, I've seen some of them really unpleasant, mean wording to teachers or administrators. This has got, it just can't continue if we want to support the wonderful school district that we've had in this community for a very long time. So, all right.
So, our meeting is 10 o'clock this Saturday in...
At Baldwin, this, yeah, this week is Baldwin, Bill.
Just so people know. That's right. And that is not a formal meeting. That is an informal conversation.
Right. There's only a couple of Board members are there that's on purpose so that we don't have a quorum. We do that to try to create what we hope is an environment where people don't have to come up to a podium and speak in front of a camera but can actually hold the conversation and not only talk to the Board, but all of us talking to each other. So, we encourage people to participate in that. I think we have a lot to learn from each other, and in an environment where we can do so in a civil way is where we're all going to grow.
Got just one last item.
Yes, yes, last one.
I want to end on a bit of good news. And so, in this past legislative session, there is a bill that has moved through and will be signed that will allow Guilford to participate in the Open Choice Program that is centered out of the New Haven area. That will allow Guilford, now, this will allow Guilford. Previously, Guilford didn't even have the opportunity to participate in one of these programs. Open Choice Programs are programs that are spread throughout the state. They tend to be centered around the Hartford area, around the Danbury area, and around the New Haven area. They allow surrounding suburban, more affluent communities to open seats to students who may not live in the Guilford Public Schools. This would allow us, moving forward, to look at available space, not to impact our budget. We will not be adding staff to do this, but to open up available space to children who can become Guilford High School students or Guilford Public School students all the way through to the high school, but not carry a Guilford address. The legislation that was passed gives us the opportunity now to have this conversation. This is not something that is going to happen for this coming September. What's going to happen this coming summer and into next year is we're going to start talking about this. So, I will be asking Representatives from ACES, who is the administering agency, to come and make a public presentation to this Board of Education and to the community about the details. How does open choice work? What are the nuts and bolts? We will have repeated conversations about experiences that other districts have had around open choice. Who has done it well and who has struggled with it? What lessons can we learn? In the Hartford area, this has been going on for 20 years or more, and so, it is an opportunity for us. We have talked about equity and social justice and diversity. This is an opportunity for us to make our schools more diverse in real terms. I want to specifically thank Representatives Scanlon and Candelora, as well as Senator Cohen. I spoke with all of them about the need to change this legislation. I know that they are all excited about this opportunity moving forward. Representative Candelora reminded me that Branford and North Branford have been participating with New Haven for a long time in the Open Choice Program, but the line ended at Branford and North Branford. It never included Guilford previously, and we now have the opportunity to be included. Representative Scanlon specifically proposed the bill when we asked him to help move this forward. I also want to thank the Courier and community members because this was written about back in September, right? There have been community members who have been asking why we don't participate and encouraging us to participate, and I specifically want to thank those community members. We had talked about this a little bit before the pandemic started, and we dropped it. We dropped it when the pandemic occurred. I really appreciate the encouragement to look at it again, to pick it up again, and I'm excited that we've taken the first step by changing legislation. This is not anything that could happen any sooner than September of '23. That would be at the soonest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We need time.
And it might even, right, we need to talk about it. But I'm really excited about the opportunity that this could afford and the way that this could really support in a positive way the conversations that we were just talking about. So, little bit of good news. I know that that report was probably longer than my last three combined. I really apologize for that. I tried to think about what could be delayed or what could be tabled into the next meeting, and I thought none of it. It all needed to be addressed, and I wanted to bring it all forward tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Excellent. All right. Okay, we are now up to nine on the Board Agenda. Again, we are putting a hold on 9.1, as I noted at the beginning of this meeting. We do have students who are going to be recognized for the CAVE Student Leadership Awards, but we're now going to do that at our June meeting when both can be here. 9.2 is to act on personnel items. They come in a number of categories, and I believe we need to vote on each category separately. So, have patience... separately. So have patience with me while we go through each of them. So the first is to please ratify the appointment of the following teacher, Meredith Bolter. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Guilford High School Science Teacher. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of Meredith Bolter as Science Teacher at the High School?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's everyone. Thank you. Please ratify the resignation of the following teachers. Marisol Lubares, Cox and Lakes Elementary School's World Language Spanish Teacher, 13 years of service to Guilford. Shawna Clifford, Calvin Lee Elementary School's Speech Language Pathologist, 1.5 years of service in Guilford. Nadine Abbas, again, I hope I'm pronouncing people's names correctly. Cox Elementary School, Grade Four Teacher, two years of service in Guilford. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these three teachers?
Some move.
Some move. Second.
Aye.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody? Okay, thank you. Please ratify the resignation for the purpose of retirement, the following teacher, Toby S. Pochia. I really should have done more practicing. I, I owe these teachers more than this. Baldwin Middle School Special Education Teacher, 21 years of service in Guilford. Is there a motion to approve that resignation?
Some move.
Some move. Jen, second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
These two really don't need to be separate items. We just rushed that last one onto the exhibit. That was already prepared.
Okay, excellent. And then lastly, to please ratify the resignation of the following administrators. Kenesha Slowly, Calvin Lee Elementary School Principal, three years of service in Guilford. Mike Regan, Adams Middle School. This is five years of service in Guilford as an administrator. Mr. Regan has given us, I believe, 20, 100, 27 or so years of, of service. Just a remarkable gift to the school system over that period of time. So is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these two administrators?
Some move.
Some move. We have to do it, by the way. We're not allowed to not do it.
He can't refuse to accept it.
We refuse. I have a motion from Mr. Serrana, second from Mr. Delmonteura. All in favor?
Very reluctantly, yes.
Not to beat a dead horse because you can't say this enough, right? A, a thank you to the teachers, a thank you to the administrators who have given to the students in this community, given their all, have been extraordinarily professional and continue to make our district what it is. So a really big thank you.
If I could just take one second, since he's here, to Mr. Regan. It's, it, the words fall short for all of us and, you know, you're here and so we want to just say to you, thank you is not nearly big enough. You're going to leave a big hole here, but we are so, also, we have to be selfless and be really excited for your next opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a receive item from the Policy Committee. Unfortunately, our Policy Chair couldn't be here tonight. This is the revision to Policy 6238, Controversial Issues. This was discussed in some detail at the Policy Committee meeting, the last Policy Committee meeting. And again, this is a receive item. We have an opportunity to continue to look it over, certainly ask the Policy Committee any questions that we have in the meantime, and then expect to vote on it next meeting. Dr. Freeman, did you anything to add about this?
Yeah, I'm happy to add just a few comments. One, as I would like the community to know, this is a policy that is entitled controversial issues. This policy has existed in Guilford Public Schools literally for decades. In fact, it was last revised in 1999. We thought that it was important considering a lot of the other things that we talked about tonight, that we should revise this policy. This policy, in fact, notes that learning happens when we discuss difficult and controversial topics. It encourages teachers to responsibly and thoughtfully engage with rich, challenging and controversial topics at the classroom level. I want to note, I think it's important for the full board and for the community to know that the Policy Committee has spent a number of meetings looking at this and these meetings have included Mrs. Sullivan, who is the Department Chair of the PE and Health Department, Mr. Russo, who is the Department Chair of the Social Studies and History Department, and Mr. Cooksey, who is the Department Chair of the English Language Arts Department. We've had teacher input on this. We've talked about it. We have looked at policies from CAE. We've looked at policies from other communities. We believe it is really important for this board and for this community to affirm currently in real time, not in 1999, that this is an important policy. So if you're watching, I want to encourage community members to, to reach out for the materials from tonight's board policy, to look at this revised policy. The board, as Dr. Balistracei just noted, is receiving it tonight, will not be voting on it until the June meeting at the earliest. And so it gives the community time to be part of this important conversation moving forward.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And then the last item under Board Agenda is the 9.4 approval of Lakes PTO Playground Donation. In the Operations Committee meeting, we had just prior to this meeting, we had the President of the Guilford Lakes PTO and the person who has been this year spearheading this playground project come to us and provide a presentation, colored, colored details. We got to see playscapes and, and get all kinds of information. The, most of you, I think, who are following, have been following the budget. Because Guilford Lakes also houses our pre-K program, the Board of Education and the community supported a bond that would build or renovate, rebuild the district-wide pre-K portion of the playground that houses at Guilford Lakes. But the PTO community at Lakes has worked really, really hard to raise funds to replace the 1 through 4 playground so that that is what they came to present to us today, both pieces of it. And we have been asked then to approve the Lakes PTO Playground donation that they made. We have gotten a request to accept the donation. We have that in hand. We have the check in hand for $96,385, which covers the playground equipment in, and the installation per the presentation we had earlier this evening. So I am going to ask for a motion that we approve the Lakes PTO Playground donation of $96,385. Some move. Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful.
Dr. Balistracei, and can I just know, I mentioned this in operations, but I just want to repeat it. This is a really important milestone. What this marks is the fact that over these last 10 years, the local neighborhood communities have come together to raise funds, to organize, to design and to replace all four of our neighborhood school playgrounds outside of the school budget. This goes beyond taxes that are levied. These are the individual neighborhoods who have raised the dollars to replace the playgrounds at each of their local neighborhood schools. And we've done all four of them in about the last nine or 10 years. That speaks to the heart of Guilford. That's what makes Guilford special. That talks about how much they love their schools and support this school community. And I just want to say again, after 10 years in general and specifically to the community at Lakes, thank you for stepping up and for making these opportunities like these possible.
And then the other thing I wanted to, just to, to add on to your comments, are the number of businesses in town?
Absolutely.
Who continue to support our schools in so many ways, including this project, which was brought to our attention again in the, in the meeting before.
It is.
We have a community of citizens and people, but also businesses that, that really go above and beyond in, in supporting what we do here and supporting our students. So a great appreciation.
The whole thing is definitely special if not unique. It really, if you don't live in Guilford, I'm not, if, if you've only lived in Guilford, I'm not sure you recognize how special it is.
Yeah, no, it's terrific. Thank you. All right. Number 10, reports of committees. Policy Committee. Again, Mrs. Peck couldn't be with us. Meeting, who's on the Policy Committee? Can you tell me when our next meeting is?
Well, we just recently had one. I think it's probably coming up in, in early summer. I don't have the exact date, but yeah.
Okay. But probably, that, they are, one of the things the Policy Committee definitely starts doing at this time of year is, is to work on information coming out of the state legislature, things that have passed.
Right.
In the session, that trickles down to each of the schools and the Policy Committee will then take in all that information and be either adjusting policies that exist to be in line with state regulations and new legislation.
Right, because session just ended Wednesday night.
There was a lot of, there was a lot of activity.
There was a packed session, so we'll see what comes from that. Okay. Operations Committee. Mr. Delmonteura, anything to add?
Not a ton to add, other than what we've already covered, but I will continue to stress to the public that, you know, again, free and reduced lunches, please sign up to, to make sure that you're ready for the beginning of the next school year.
That's right.
Very important.
Excellent, thank you. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. Dr. Hirsch, do you have anything to report?
Well, we were supposed to meet at the end of this month, but that's going to have to be canceled because Dr. Crystal can't be there.
Oh, okay. All right. So we'll have to reschedule that.
We'll reschedule if there's pressing.
Excellent. Terrific. Liaisons to Town Committees, any, any other town committees? Okay. And then Mrs. Peck is the person who is the liaison to our Learn Board of Directors. And so often, we joke about this, I think, every month, that meeting happens right after we meet, but we will get a report from her. Yeah. All right. We are up now to public questions. Is there anyone in the public who would like to come forth to address the board, much like the earlier public forum? We just asked you to give your name and address. There is a pad. If you would write that down, it really helps Terry when she's taking minutes. And if you want to come up and speak and then put your name and address on that pad, that's fine. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Hi.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Clarice Yasuhara, Norton Town Road. My pronouns are she, her, hers. And I am here to first thank the teachers, thank the administration. Shout out to Principal Slowly. She will be missed at Calvin Lee. So thank you to that. And I want to also acknowledge my role in the tone, as you have mentioned, in social media. It's hard not to get worked up about this. And if you know me via social media or in, or as a friend, you know that I'm very honest. And I just want to say that I applaud every effort that is made for inclusivity for all of us. You know, it's not indoctrination, it's real life. A lot of us here went to college last century and, you know, things have just evolved. I, you know, going to the high schools in the 90s, it was all, don't ask, don't tell. But Matthew Shepard didn't have that choice. I went to college and I was exposed to the LGBT community with a lesbian roommate. She married a trans man. It's out there whether or not people acknowledge it. And censoring lessons here is not going to change that. It's not. It's a reality that's different from ours, but it's a reality. And, I mean, I, I just don't know what to say. It's, you know, people say there have never been more divisive. This community has never been more divisive than while doing this work. And the fact is, well, I mean, I can't say the fact is because, I don't know, I didn't grow up here in Guilford. But the fact, it, it remains that, it's not that it's more divisive, it's that we're speaking up. It's that we're not shying away from this. You know, we're not, we're not going to stay quiet. We're not gonna, we're not gonna accept the norm. Because there is no norm. Everybody does their own thing. And I'm looking forward to any further progress in this area for social justice. And it's been three years that I've been asking to move this down to the elementary school level. And it's possible because there are books that celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Month. There are books that teach queer history, which is American history. There are books that teach that separates and never go for equal. There, it, it's age appropriate. I did.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up. Close to four minutes till we get other people to get a chance to talk, but thank you.
Yeah. That, that's just it. We just, it may not be our reality, but it's the reality of the world. So.
Thank you.
That is it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
I have to go for my husband because my phone's going to die. Hi, Jessica Harrington. I live at 464 Granite Road. I feel like Dr. Freeman's Superintendent Report was like a compliment sandwich of sorts. It started out with like lots of really great information. I was super excited to hear about the Teach Rock, professional development coming for our teachers in an area where they definitely need that support. Community engagement, student engagement, looking at policies is super, super important and cannot be ignored. And then we kind of got to the end and we talked about school choice, which is also important. And I'm super excited to hear that other students in Connecticut will have an opportunity to attend our stellar schools here in Guilford. But the middle, not so great. It's really disheartening to hear that our teachers are receiving emails from a very small minority in town that is pushing them to make decisions that are going to impact our families here in Guilford. So I just want to remind everyone that while our teachers are getting these emails, and it's disheartening, that in the fall, 6,200 people in Guilford voted in support of social justice and equity work. That's a lot of people. And we are not stopping. We're not standing back. We are here. Dr. Hirsch said, we're not going to take it. No, we're not. We're not going to take that small minority voice. We are here to support each and every one of you. We are here to support social justice and equity work. And whatever you need, ask us. We are here for you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to come forward?
Come on in. Jennifer Portwright at 91 Half Mile Road and hope I am inserting these comments in the right place because it is a little bit on the cusp of Dr. Freeman's report about enrollment. So I have a rising second grader, soon to be at Calvin Lee School. And with the absence of Principal Slowly, soon to be, you know, he mentioned rattling cages and I appreciate that comment because that means you're hearing us. I also appreciate you citing the guidelines because those are very important. A lot of the examples you gave, though, were centered around the third and fourth graders. And so my comments really surround the and so my comments really surround the first to second grade. So right now, the enrollment at Calvin Lee has a historically, or has a small number of second grade students, so it warrants there to be two second grade teachers at this time. The group of incoming first graders is a little bit larger, but it seems that you are extremely guideline-focused and are constantly monitoring the enrollment as it changes throughout the summer. The way it stands right now, if the current first grade classes, they have three, if they go into two sections, they're going to be at guideline max for Guilford Public Schools. So it ends up being 21.5 students, half a student will go into 22, and then there'll be 21 in another. So in the event that another student were to transfer, or there is an ad, we're at Guilford Public School Max, and so I think that was part of the rolling conversation that you cited, and I just appreciate that there is consideration into that. You mentioned that those are pre-pandemic benchmarks, which I appreciate you acknowledging. I know that many of the parents, we've collected names today, more than a quorum, 30, of course, support our teachers. I can't speak for all of them, but I know for a fact that 30 who reached out to me personally cited examples of how the pandemic has changed the way that their students interact with their classmates and even their teachers. A lot of teachers are implementing behavioral modifications in classrooms, because the students tend to get overwhelmed, even with the small amount of 14, 15 students that they're having per class right now. So having them jump to 21 students per class next year, even though it's within guideline, it's at the apex of that guideline and no room for growth. So I appreciate you evaluating, I appreciate you recognizing. I feel that the reason we are rattling cages, as you say, is because in the absence of leadership, we just don't want this decision to be left unheard, left undone, but it sounds like that you are completely doing your due diligence. So on behalf of the parents at the, of the Calvin Lee first grade families, we really appreciate that and hope to continue this dialogue going forward, so, and keep these classes small and according to guidelines. So appreciate everything you're doing. Teacher Appreciation Week was wonderful. It was such a great way for our students to show love and gratitude for their teachers, and I just hope to have the opportunity to spread more of that love in a small amount of classrooms for next year, because we like our small classes in Guilford and just wanted here to guideline, so appreciate the consideration.
No, wonderful, wonderful to have the community come and bring those to our attention as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, okay.
My phone is charged.
That's a conversation for later. We need you to give your name and address, but you can tell we know.
Bob Harrington, 464 Granite Road.
Thank you.
When Dr. Freeman gave his report, and he was talking about the conversation as it stands in Guilford and how it's happening on social media, that's a big part of why I wanted to be at this particular meeting, is to show a lot of support, because I saw one of the posts that you were talking about, and I saw it shared kind of all over social media, and I saw the original post and some of the responses to that, and the other people posting that post and some of the responses to that, and good and bad that was said about it. Hold on, I need my notes. And I saw a lot of people who were commending that particular assignment that was shared and saying it's a great thing, and I agree with them, but I didn't want to commend it, because along the lines of that conversation, one of the things that I saw as I was going through what people were talking about was that assignment is, I believe, a requirement by the state. Some of what it's teaching is not anything that any of you said has to happen. And it was along the lines of the conversation that's happening in social media, is people are saying, "Look at what Guilford did, look at this horrible thing," and it's, Guilford didn't do this. It's very, very misleading, and I was very upset to see all the things that were said about some of the teachers, and how could they teach these things, and they're doing a job, they're doing what they're supposed to. And so I kind of, I felt for the teachers, I felt for all the people who have to see all that stuff, and it was nice to hear you say that that's, they have to deal with it. And it's, and I wanted to come and give my support through you guys, the teachers, because I only have, you know, one student currently in the, in school, and another coming in another couple of years, so only interact with a couple. I wanted to say, I wanted to turn around some of the language in that email that I didn't know that went to all the teachers and all the staff, for all the teachers, which is, "We're also watching the teachers, but we're watching you do good things, we're watching you succeed at your jobs, and we're very grateful for you for doing your jobs and doing them well." So yes, we're watching you, but we're watching you do good things, and that's, that's a good thing in and of itself, and now I'm rambling, and so I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joanna Meyer from 88 Drumara Road here in Guilford. I wanted to say, first of all, I want to express appreciation for all the teachers and administrators that have touched my children here in the Guilford Public Schools. It's really been a pleasure to be in the schools and really have appreciated so many educators who are so devoted and give so much of themselves every day. I think that's really so important. I also want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Freeman for raising the important issue of the pressure that our administrators and teachers are facing right now. I didn't really expect tonight to hear such an honest appraisal of what's going on. And I know for some of us who try to be positive, it's really hard to see the negativity and to accept how much it is part of something bigger. So I'm very concerned about the harassment of educators and administrators in Guilford and beyond, which is happening in the name of protecting children. And I don't think the issue is the way we're having these conversations, I think we've agreed on that, these conversations about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but those tactics, those tactics that people are using to divide and undermine our schools. The fact that a small group of parents and other Guilford residents is making a lot of noise, making a lot of frivolous requests, making a lot of complaints that are not made with action in mind, that are not made in good intention. And I think what's happening is our teachers and administrators are being prevented from doing what they were trained and hired to do, which is be there for our students, and that's really what we need them to do, and they're not able to do that. It's really noticeable to me, as someone who pays attention to education more broadly, that this is not about protecting children, this is part of a national movement. And it's not part of a national movement about critical race theory, it's a national movement to undermine public education. That's what it's about. I think we need to understand that as people who have faith in our schools and rely on our schools and value our schools, that there really are people out there who are trying to sour our country on public education, and I think that's really shameful. And I don't know if that's the reason, the motivation for local people necessarily, but that is, I believe, the motivation for this, these national playbooks. And I think we have to be aware of that and really aware of what this is really about. Sometimes it's easy to get.
I'm so sorry, Jo, so, no, just, do you need to, Mike, do you need to stop now?
Yeah, in two minutes.
Okay, oh, in two minutes. Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. I get a signal when the tape's going to die.
There's tape?
And I couldn't.
Yeah.
My sincere apologies. So you can finish, and then we have to change the tape.
Okay. So, so yes, basically, just, I think we have to have our eyes wide open, and I think we need to focus on the right things. And I guess what my, my request is for the Board of Education is to continue exploring how we can protect teachers and administrators, who are public servants, but they're not elected officials, and they don't deserve to be harassed, and how we as a community can hold people accountable, adults accountable, for their words and actions, as we would say we want students to be accountable for their words and actions. And I think it really takes all of us. And some of it may be tuning out some of the noise, but there also has to be a way to turn down the volume. So I thank you all, and I appreciate the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you need to, thank you, sorry. We just.